Are we streaming live?
Yes.
Recording, ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay. See if it's still up there, so we'll get going. This is the pre-meeting, the meeting about the meeting, Monday, March 17th. We actually have a decent amount of things on the agenda, so this will be good to have today. First, we'll approve the agenda. I'm going to take off the community advisory group appointment unless I have time to review that. And in between the meetings, I have, has anybody had time to review that applicant? Or is it just one applicant?
We have two for the economic development.
I'm not sure Kathy is the one who would know.
Okay. Kathy, if you're there, could you send out the two application PDFs and I'll look at them and make the appointment?
You betcha.
Thank you. I don't have access to the box folder on my new city phone. Thank you. We have a proclamation, equal payday proclamation. I'm happy to allow anybody to read that. I can do it. Councilor Bright?
I remember going through all of the steps that we had to go through when I was talking to her water, so near and dear to my heart.
Thank you. Sounds good. Consent agenda has minutes and then we have a couple of sub subdivisions on there, the cooperative agreement with ODOT for 43 and transient lodging tax. Any questions about those or comments?
Is this different from what we did before on the transient lodging tax?
This is just our IGA with the state so that they can collect it. So everything we've done before has been to modify, see the code so that it allows for this. It's just been an ongoing long process to get, I think, here.
This, this is what makes all of that other work worth it. If we didn't do this, then we would be not reaping the benefits.
Yep.
And this ODOT IGA, is that for the Merrill Hirst project it looks like? And it's too bad because the scope has been
Really narrow.
Reduced and reduced from what it once was. Been the reason for those costs increases mainly time.
Well.
Well, so last year council approved the ODOT project delivery IGA modification, which reduced the scope of the project. And that was due to time constraints, increasing budget costs to do the entire corridor. There's a lot of state review from right of way, so it was reduced down to go of just the Merrill Hirst intersection. The IGA in front of you today is a maintenance agreement to reduce the city's requirement from the original corridor to have to maintain that to the actual project scope of that intersection. So just making sure the city is not liable to maintain a swath of corridor that we did not actually have.
Never got approved.
Yep.
Sounds good.
That makes sense.
Well, does anybody want to make comments on that or at that? We could pull it off the consent agenda if needed.
I think it's fine.
Okay.
A lot of feedback from you and Mary.
Yeah, I don't know. We said that, we said that issue before.
Um.
Be quietly.
So now we'll go to the business meeting then. You've gotten through that. And first, a couple items are, first is the stormwater management manual. And I know, City Council, you've done a lot of work getting this ready, so do you have any?
Yeah, so this is the ordinance for the stormwater management manual that's specific to the city of Westland. Clark brought that forward. Oh, hey, Clark. You can talk about it as well.
You're fine. I'm in town.
At the last reception. And so we're just following the steps that we outlined for you to give the authority to enact it, to adopt it or enact it and to make amendments.
And then, of course, that's what this particular ordinance is.
I made a few, just minor edits to the version you saw. They are like adding a hyphen in the wrong place, adding an "of", so just technical amendments to make it smoother. But that should be consistent with what you saw. And so you would, because it's an ordinance, you would just do your normal process of opening a hearing to solicit if there's any public comments. If there's nothing, just close the hearing and then you can have your discussions about the ordinance and then make a motion.
Okay, and did we put the public comment period? Is that after we adopt it, we'll take comments?
For the actual manual.
For the manual itself? Cool.
So it is available for public comment.
And so that part won't come back till your next business meeting with the resolution and any updates from Clark if he receives significant comments.
So this is adopting
Just the ordinance language.
Authority. Okay, and then next time the manual comes in, we'll do that.
Yep, two-step process.
Got it. Any questions or comments? Okay. Next is the local contracting rule exemption for construction management projects. So probably related to OP Center. John, do you have any comments? Kick that off?
Well, I, we have staff here who have been working on this for quite some time. I have Morgan, Clark, and Kaylee. And this is somewhat of a technical piece that's required in order to move forward with preferred project strategy. And your experts are here in the room if you have any questions of us. But we do recommend approval and moving forward in this way.
Any questions? We can discuss more in the meeting. Okay. Well.
Just for process with that one. So Clash worked on the initial findings of fact with Morgan. And then Mac from Barry Elsner reviewed that and helped with these findings of fact. They're important. You do have to approve and adopt them in order to use this exemption. And in the notice that Morgan provided, she said we would hold a hearing. So this one, just like the ordinance, I think it's important that you open the hearing. I haven't heard that we have any comments.
I'm not aware of any.
And if there's none, that's fine, but close it. So you've done the proper procedure that we did hold a hearing. And then if you have any questions about the particular findings, Morgan and Mac worked on those. Sure they were explained, you know, the process and the reasoning we have for this exemption.
Sounds good. Is there a script for that, like hearing or should I just open the pub, you know?
Yeah, it's just like your normal legislative hearing. You know, I think it's more like soliciting public comment, but go ahead and call the hearing and see your process.
Thank you. Next, we will go to the investment policy update. Councilor Bright, we're expecting a lot of questions from you.
Councilor Bright's first question is probably going to be, why did the government member say it's to the Urban Renewal Agency Board? That split through when we were working on the packet. This is the memo template we had brought forward and obviously didn't correct the top. So this is addressed to the mayor and city council, not to the board, which is actually an important distinction in this case. These are the city's financial policies. So Lauren's been working on this.
Substance.
Substance matters, but the details matter too.
And we hired government portfolio advisors back in September. And so they are a firm that does investment advising. And they have been helping us revise our policy. They're going to be here tonight to ask more specific questions if you have any about the types of investments or things like that. But they've been helping us. Our policy was back from November of 2008, I believe. And so we have redone our policy to be in line with the Oregon Short Term Fund Board policy. And the reason why we're doing this now is that we are coming up on our cap in the local government investment pool, which we have never been at before. But because of some bond issuances that we still have outstanding and our reserves needing to be higher than before because our expenditures are higher and a few other things, our money is coming close to the cap and we don't want to have our money sitting in a checking account and making no money. So they are going to be helping us, once this policy gets implemented, start making some investments outside the pool. And then we will bring this policy forward every year.
For just a review.
For review, yeah.
Yeah, and I know that the state policies are still pretty tight. Not like we can just, you know, go buy a bunch of junk bonds or cryptocurrency or something.
We're not buying growth stocks, okay, everybody?
But honestly, feel free to ask those questions. The advisory groups, I met with them at least once with Lauren and they're great. They really have quite a bit of knowledge and they're happy to answer those questions. Make sure you
They'd probably be thrilled.
What?
They'd probably be thrilled.
Yeah, they really will. So like that, you know, you understand the process and what types of investments are made and they'd be happy to talk about that.
And our, this new policy did get favorable review from the Oregon Short Term Fund Board. They looked over it at their meeting in January and looked over it. And they had a few questions for us, but all things that they thought were fantastic. We're good to move forward with it. So they're not an authority to like actually approve something, but they gave it a review. Because they're, and it was in line with their policy, so.
We talked about this a little bit in the budget message, but I feel like a natural question. Why is this the city of Westland since they don't have any money? But we are approaching our $62 million savings amount, right? And Lauren explained the reasons for that. But for an organization of our size, with some of the debt that we've taken out in projects like that, it's not actually that hard to get there. And with the things coming up in the next biennium that could require to take us, take on more debt, we just need to do this in order to be, to be safe. But I think there's a little bit of messaging in this about like, we're not, you know, we're responsible stewards of money. We're not supporting money. We're not saving money beyond what we need to be. We really are trying to spend the money on projects as taxpayers have asked us to do, so.
We took out the FFCO for the waterline project for
That's a piece of it.
$12 million. And then they have built
Yeah. We've been sitting on that money for over a year now and it's just, it is earning interest for us. And we actually just did our arbitrage report on that, which means that we're, can't really earn more interest than what we are paying on the debt to make it tax-free. And so at this point, we don't have to pay anything back for taxes, but we are actually earning quite a bit on that money. And as long as we spend it, we can save it all. It's a big calculation, but we are fine for right now. But yeah, that is one of the, one of the things that's sitting out there is that more like 13 now because of the investment.
Which is good because the costs are going.
Exactly, exactly. And then, you know, we are talking about an operations center bond eventually and if there are any other bonds or finance issuing that we have to put in our accounts that will exceed that 62 million.
Understood. Well, thanks for bringing that forward. We will talk about that during the meeting.
The meeting.
On the agenda is from Mr. Erickson on the arts and culture recommendation for art on the main street bike kiosk. And it looks like the cost increased.
Yeah, there's been a new tariff. The artists have come back with some new costs for materials. And for where the production is going to happen, which won't be, I think, at his art studios. Have to be sold, have to be done in Salem, I believe. So there's some new costs involved. So there's plenty, there's money to cover those costs and the percentage for the arts. So it's not taking away from some other department or some other fund. But the contract is still in the process of being finished. It would be nice to have it with the right amount of money. So our recommendation is that you would, you would okay that, that new expense.
So it's come in the material.
Just all materials, yeah, from my understanding, yes.
Yeah, I think it's materials and locations.
Understood.
And the partners who've been involved in this project, Doug and the commission, they're all supportive of this. Still feel like it's good value.
Thank you.
Well, looking at the presentation of the design, I'm really excited to see it still.
We have at least one member from the Parks Commission, Citron Craig will be here to talk about it.
So that's quite a potpourri of topics for you tonight. We appreciate you saying that. That's the end of the business agenda.
It's not the end of the meeting though, because we'll have the city manager report.
Oh, it's gonna be a whopper. Yeah, it's gonna be good.
So, well, thank you, everybody. Anything else for the good of the order? For this meeting, I think we'll give everybody a 15-minute break.
Not too late to find something green to wear.
Yeah, that's true. Everybody who's not wearing green gets pinched.
No, we don't, no.
I ended up getting
No. Don't do that.
No.
Well played. I like you, Clark.
That was a joke for the record. All right, we're adjourned.
I'm gonna hand you all.
Thank you. We will see you in 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody. No pinching in the council chamber tonight if anybody's not wearing green. We're not going to do that. Are we streaming live to the, thank you. So we are ready to go. And the first item of business is to do the pledge of allegiance on the, on the agenda. So we'll, please rise and we'll do the pledge. Okay? Pledge of allegiance. Five.
States of America, to the republic, as one nation, indivisible, infinite, endless.
Thank you. The next item of business is to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda for the March 17th, 2025 Westland City Council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for the March 17th, 2025 Westland City Council meeting. I will just note for the record of the minutes that Councilor Groner is excused from the meeting tonight. So he will not be joining us. And with that, we will call the roll. See no discussion.
Councilor Bonnington?
Yes.
Councilor Bright?
Yes.
Council President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Maybe Listowski?
Yes. Thank you. Next is public comment, and I know we have at least one public comment tonight, or maybe two.
Elizabeth Miller.
Elizabeth, welcome. Just state your name and city residence for the record and we'll give you up to three minutes if you need it.
I'm Elizabeth Miller, go by Liz, and I live in Westland.
Go ahead. Thank you.
So the reason why I'm here tonight. Oh, okay, closer. The reason why I'm present tonight and why I'm speaking is I'm requesting from the city council that they consider making an ordinance on our public streets in Westland on either restricting with a time limit of dumpsters and storage mini containers. The letter that I wrote to the mayor, and I think also some of you responded, was in evidence to this mini storage unit that had been there for over 11 months. And I had made contact twice with Westland Police Department and they told me that there is no ordinance on the books for limiting dumpsters or mini storage. So that they couldn't help me. There's no ordinance to enforce. And so then I thought, well, you know, for me, it's a safety issue. Having to pass a bus, another vehicle, a bicyclist. And especially when the tennis courts and the pools are open, children, they park the cars and they're in the street before you see them as you're going because the speed limit in that, on that street clubhouse circle is 25 miles an hour. So it seemed to me a safety hazard. I had also contacted the mini storage unit to verify that it had been there and placed in April of 2024. So my request is that we have a ordinance that limits the time. I spoke with my neighbors and Sue, who's with me tonight, actually said, well, we don't want to completely ban them because it's, it's actually practical maybe for some people to have them when they're remodeling or if they need the mini storages they're moving in. But to have a time limit, like, I don't know, seven, 14 days or 20 days or 30 days, but not almost a year. And for me, as I said again, it was just mainly a safety issue that I was concerned about.
Thank you for bringing this up to us at our meeting. And I think we are still waiting on some follow-up information on this topic. I know the city manager emailed back that they were going to look into the issue.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for being here tonight. We have been looking at this and I'm frankly somewhat surprised it hasn't come up before. I do think this is a gap in our ordinances and our police department, we're going to work as a team, the city attorney, and bring some ideas back to city council on this. So we appreciate you bringing it up to us.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. So we'll, we'll follow up with you once we have some more information on the different options. And very interesting issue. I'm also surprised this has never been brought up before in the 100-year history of Westland. That's kind of, it is surprising. Thank you. So we'll be in touch. And next speaker, we have Ms. Handy.
Vicki Handy.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And just state your name and city residence and we have flexible, flexible time. So three minutes, but you're going to go a little over if
I need five. I'm representing the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Take five and maybe even a little longer if you need it.
Okay, thanks.
That's fine.
Good evening and happy St. Patrick's Day, first of all, city council. I'm co-chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Vicki Handy. I live in the Willamette neighborhood and with that association. I'm representing the board tonight. Thanks.
Yes.
Representing the board tonight regarding city acquisition of the tugboat Lady B for placement in Willamette Park. This is in no way to speak of the historical significance of the tugboat. Only objective concerns regarding the city's acquisition and placement in Westland parks. The board has multiple, has had multiple in-depth presentations and discussions regarding the tugboat Lady B. The board unanimously and strongly advised city council three times to deny the placement of the Lady B in Willamette Park. The first presentation to Parks and Rec Advisory Board was December 2022, followed by extensive discussions in June of 2023, in November of 2024, and again last week in 2025. Each time, we advised against this action in a unanimous vote. Our concerns are these. First, location. Back in 2022, the parks director was Ken Warner. His concerns were he identified that the permitting required for siding in a floodplain would be very complicated and use a space in an already overused park and the project not in alignment with the vision for Willamette Park. At that time, the board said Willamette Park is the most highly programmed park with space at a premium. It is the park with the best low bank access to the Willamette River for water sports. We discussed all of the park properties and found that none would actually support the placement of a tugboat based on land use restrictions, lease conditions, space availability, or priorities for park development. At each discussion, the board found that the tugboat is not in alignment with our most pressing priorities when we are planning for parks. These priorities include maintenance, auditing safety of trails and bridges, building structured policy and procedures, mitigating impact from the Mediterranean Oak Forest, and renegotiating leased property. For capital improvement projects, our focus is on the non-motorized boat launch at Willamette Park. Our second concern is around risk liability. Personally, I cannot believe anybody would recommend building a structure with lead-based paint in an area that's used by kids. Repainting with primer as an encapsulating technique does not mitigate lead-related risk for outdoor use around children. It doesn't work. That's not what's recommended. Replacement, removal, or total resurfacing the product with a vinyl-like product is recommended. That's part one. Two, the park that serves families and small children, the liability of the inevitable plane on the structure must be considered. Is considered an attractive nuisance for child's safety. Also, there is no exit strategy for the city for removing a large item with lead-based paint. Doing the research into this, it is a very complicated process. Please research this issue in more detail. The next issue is financial liability. Currently, the advocates have only 12% $25,000 of their projected budget need of $200,000, leaving the city with the financial risk if they commit to this plan. Also, the advocate's budget is based on some false assumption regarding the risk mitigation. And it does not include all of the project management or anything else in the budgeting process. That falls on the city. We anticipate much higher sums for meeting minimal levels of safety. Also, there is no budget for ongoing maintenance. Repainting it twice in 20 years does not qualify as an ongoing maintenance strategy. Considering our understaffed Parks Department, we do not support adding this burden to their responsibilities. If the city takes ownership, we need to provide storage and the project management to take this project through completion. We don't have the resources to do this. We also have the environmental concerns. Even using primer paint, it does not mitigate the lead paint debris contamination of the environment. We've actually done research in this area and it does not meet the needs of safety for Westland. The most recent documentation from the advocates for the tugboat does not actually include their meetings with PRAB, with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Given the timing of presentation, the issue has been complicated by having turnover with the parks director, turnover with city council members, and turnover with our council liaison. We're really happy with Councilor Bonnington right now. But we also believe that we have experienced some inconsistencies regarding council actually receiving our advisory statements. I want you to know we have started a new advisory log that tracks how we've communicated our advisory statements. So this doesn't happen in the future because we really do believe in partnering with the city council in all ways. However, regardless, Parks and Rec Advisory Board needs to make sure that the council is hearing the results of our due diligence and acknowledge the strong opposition to taking on the liability for the tugboat. Again, this in no way negates any historical value of the tugboat. We are simply applying objective criteria to the decision to take on this project and any liability associated with it. All of us are just volunteers, but we work really hard to serve Westland through stewardship of land and resources. And I ask you to take this into consideration as you make decisions regarding this issue.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for making that big work plan for the, for the group that I, that was recently sent over. And I think that's an example for all of our boards. And I'd love to work to see if we could do that for all of our advisory boards. It's very, very detailed and thorough and nice to see what the group is working on. And you took that on yourself, so I appreciate that. In terms of the tugboat, we hear you. And I'm also very glad you refreshed us with the PRAB's concerns because those weren't always top of mind. And appreciate that. So we will take those into consideration for sure as a city council and appreciate all the due diligence you've done into the topic. And I don't know what the outcome will be. I think we are in the phase of working with staff and factoring in input you've just given. And then we'll have another work session pretty soon on the topic. We are just trying, I think, from our perspective, to get to a decision, one way or the other. And factoring in all the different issues and definitely on the financial piece. It was my understanding that the advocates, you know, I wouldn't take that on if the city was going to have a big liability. It would be if they were going to fundraise and fund it, would be my willingness. But then you've brought up tonight a lot of good thoughts also, the kind of way against it. So we have a lot of harmonizing to do here.
Well, if you would like to speak to Parks Board at greater length or you would like any additional information, you know you can always count on us.
Sounds, sounds good. Thank you. We'll look forward to a joint meeting at some point with the Parks Board. Any other comments? Mary, did you have any? I didn't see if you had your hand up. Okay. Anything else? Public comments?
That is all.
Okay. Thank you. Lots to consider. With that, we'll move to mayor and council reports, reports from community advisory groups. I'll just start by saying had a great time in Washington DC. And this is also reports from city business, I always say, beyond DC. And this is also reports from city business. I always say, be on a community group. Great time in Washington, DC, meeting with the federal delegation and spending time with the city councilors from all across Oregon and learned a lot. And at some point, I think it'd be good to give a presentation or more in-depth discussion of what we learned at the conference. I won't do that tonight due to time, but we could maybe have a work session discussion on, on that. And so we'll do that. So, anything else? Counselor Bright?
I attended the Planning Commission meeting on March 5, and they were looking over the planning docket for this year, which will be coming to the council to make sure that we're all in agreement. They also had a presentation on the housing production strategy, which they'll be having another work session on that this Wednesday. We had our fourth Vision 43 Working Group meeting and are getting closer to defining the actual boundaries of where we anticipate zoning changes. And I attended the Water Environmental Services Advisory Group meeting, and they were asking for recommendation for updating their system development charges, which will now go to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Great report. Counselor President?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also attended the Conference of the National League of Cities in Washington, DC, along with Counselor Bonnington and Counselor Groner and the mayor. And we learned a lot of interesting advocacy opportunities for matters of transportation, related funding, water infrastructure. And I also attended at the end of the week, the American Waterways Association Conference events that we were giving testimony to our federal delegation and also from other states regarding, they're on behalf of my role with the Willamette Falls Locks Authority, and got to meet some other locks and port professionals and hear interesting testimony from river pilots on the Astoria Bar and people like that. It was very interesting. Today, I spent a few hours this morning with the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition at our Board Retreat, which is an annual activity pursuing the heritage, National Heritage Area status for 56 river mile stretch of the upper Willamette, above Willamette Falls. For those of you who may not have heard of this coalition, and we were very excited to hold our Board Retreat in the newly restored Historic City Hall, which is wonderful. And it's only, I mean, it's of course not fully furnished, but it is beautiful, and I'm very excited about the upcoming opportunity to hold events there and have the public see it too. And this afternoon, I was in a Zoom call for the monthly Willamette Falls Trust Board Meeting, and that is also an exciting opportunity for being led by former Governor Kate Brown at this time and working toward public access and Indigenous-led cultural interpretation to occur nearer the falls as of yet undetermined exact space because of the mill closing and the ongoing conversations with PGE. So, but very exciting, and I'll fill you in more as we learn more about that. Thank you.
Counselor Bonnington?
I also was in DC, and that was a fantastic experience. I really enjoyed spending time with you guys. And it was really eye-opening to be able to interact with, there were nearly 3,000 people who do what we do, being in the same room with them and around them for a few days was a pretty interesting experience. Now, with regards to the Parks Board, which met last Thursday, they, they're a very serious group of people, and I really enjoy working with them. The fact that Vicki took the time to come here tonight to speak to us says a lot about how seriously they, they take that work. They discussed and unanimously voted on a recommendation for us, which in terms of conveying that, I'm not sure there's a better way to do that than just read it.
Go ahead.
So this is theirs. I'm just conveying it as the messenger. "The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board expresses concern regarding the Oppenlander Project and advises the council to not underestimate upgrade costs. The council needs to seriously consider the cost of upgrades and project management, time for community engagement to determine actual usage and space needs, and ongoing budgeted funds for management and maintenance. PREP supports council weighing all city priorities and considering the Parks and Rec priorities to determine the need for expanded parkland." And my laptop just died, but there was one sentence left. There we go. "PREP stands as unengaged partner in this decision and potential implementation." In terms of the, the tugboat, I believe Vicki explained that fantastically. So we'll leave it there.
Thank you. Great report. One other thing that I realized I forgot to mention was had a great planning meeting today with our city staff related to the State of the City speech, which will, is slated to, invitations will be going out shortly, but it's going to be in May, on May 6, Tuesday, May 6, at the library at 6:00 PM. And we're, we had a good meeting and thinking about ways this could go. And one of the ideas that I had was maybe having some interaction with city councilors at that event. Last year, we had a staff panel. Maybe this year, I'm thinking we have some tabling with some of the projects we're doing out in the foyer of the library, and maybe city councilors can talk about a project that they're interested in or kind of a policy area that they're interested in. Have kind of a facilitated discussion that way, maybe one-on-one, one comes up for a few minutes, or as a group where I kind of, just like last year's staff panel where the mics passed down, everybody's sitting up there. So if folks are interested, I wanted to gauge whether people would be interested in participating in the State of the City in that way, talk about what we're, you know, everybody kind of has their niche area focus that they're interested in. We'll connect with Counselor Groner. But John, I'm seeing nodding heads from the council, so that, that'll be a great addition this year and a little, change it up a little bit. So that will again be Tuesday, May 6, at the adult community, at the library, and food will be provided. And we're looking into getting a jazz band to come in and play a little music. It should be a good occasion. And that will go out in the Owl also. So the date is set. Thank you, everybody. With that, we'll move to the appointment of a community advisory group member. We had two applicants for one spot. So, oh, I will place before the council Jared Dean to the Economic Development Committee. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments?
I move to approve the mayor's appointments.
Second.
Okay, it's removed and seconded to approve the mayor's appointment of Jared Dean to the Economic Development Committee. Any discussion, comments, other than to, this is always difficult decisions with regard to community advisory group members. And I just appreciate everybody applying and serving, and I'm glad to have everybody in a role on an advisory board now, you know. Counselor President and then Counselor Bonnington?
Thank you. I was just going to note that we appreciate the contribution of Shannon Knight on the Committee for Community Involvement and appreciate her service and would just like to offer a person who's not already serving an opportunity to serve, and that was really the main purpose of that choice. So thank you to both of them.
Thank you for clarifying that. I was trying to say that myself. Counselor Bonnington has a question, and it'll go to Counselor Bright before the vote.
I'm just wondering if it might make sense, since we frequently do get more applicants than we have positions, if we had some sort of queue system where if someone has applied in the last six months and another position on that board comes up, they can be followed up with immediately? Or, I don't know.
And I feel like, do we have a list of, because on the letters, it always says, "We will retain your application for 2025," or, you know, for a period of time. So I think we have a list like that, and we sometimes will call folks off of that if they, if another board comes up that they didn't apply for. So, good question. And we do have that, but we, we can make more use of that, I think. Good point. Counselor Bright?
I just want to say how much we all appreciate people in the community stepping up for these positions when there's openings on the boards, and it's, having more applicants than openings is a good problem to have, I think.
Good point. Thank you. So the motion on the table, appointing Jared Dean, has been seconded to the Economic Development Committee. So we'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counselor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Mayor Bealstaski?
Yes. Thank you. So the motion passes. We'll move on to the Equal Pay Day proclamation to be read by Counselor Bright.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas March 25 is Equal Pay Day this year, a date that fittingly falls within Women's History Month and highlights the persistent issue of the pay gap, and whereas we highlight the injustice of gender wage gaps by marking how far into this year women must work on average to earn what men made last year. And whereas women's labor force participation is the highest it has been in decades, and the gender pay gap is the narrowest it has ever been on record. And whereas despite this progress, the fight for equal pay continues. And whereas according to the American Association of University Women, women working full-time earn about 83% of what their male counterparts make, with the gap even wider for women of color. And whereas we are making tremendous progress, however, there is still much more we must do. And whereas let us ensure women get the pay they have earned and deserve, and give our daughters the same opportunities as our sons. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of West Lynn, that March 25, 2025 is Equal Pay Day.
Thank you, Counselor, for reading that. We will now move to the Consent Agenda, which has three items on it that I would entertain a motion. First of all, wait a minute, is there any objection to any of the items on the consent agenda? I always ask that to be able to follow. Okay, no seen, no objection. So I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda for the March 17, 2025 West Lynn City Council Meeting, which includes the February 10, 2025 Meeting Minutes, the Amendment to Cooperative Maintenance Agreement between the City and the State of Oregon for OR 43 multimodal improvements, and transient lodging tax collection intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda for the March 17, 2025 West Lynn City Council Meeting, which includes February 10, 2025 Meeting Minutes, the Amendment to Cooperative Maintenance Agreement between the City and State of Oregon for OR 43 multimodal improvements, and the transient lodging tax collection intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon. Please call the roll.
Counselor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Mayor Bealstaski?
Yes. So the Consent Agenda is approved. With that, we can move on. I just have to make one comment about the 43 Cooperative Maintenance Agreement, which is that it's disappointing that the costs have gone up after the, the expectation, I think, long ago when the bond passed in 2018 was that the whole stretch from, from Hidden, from Merrillhurst and Hidden Springs all the way down to the 205 area would be done. And then because of the delays and the cost increases and the state processes, the cost has gone up, and now we can only do one intersection. And I think this is one of the arguments, or one of the points in favor of the city gaining control of the road eventually and reaching a financial deal to do so, because it's, we could, could have moved a lot faster and gotten more of it, more of the stretch done without going through the State of Oregon highway, highway permitting requirements and all of those related things. So I just, I'm off my soapbox now, decided to make a comment on that. But we're glad to have that project being completed and glad we could approve that contract to get it, get it going. I think it is already going, actually, down at the Merrillhurst Drive intersection. I'm sure folks will start to see work there they haven't already. With that, let's move on to the Business Meeting. It's kind of an interesting sampling of everything, the random topics that come before City Council, all important and a very, a variation of different city topics tonight, as per usual. So the first item is the Anordinance Amending the Western Municipal Code, Chapter 4 relating to surface water management. And I'll turn that over to the City Manager to introduce staff.
Thank you, Mayor. While Clark Ide from our Engineering Department comes up here to present the report, I'll just remind you that this is a topic you discussed in work session on March 3. And you gave, you gave us the approval to move forward, to bring you two items. So sort of a two-stage approach. Tonight's, tonight's action, Ordinance 715, 1758, is an ordinance that gives us the authority to adopt a stormwater manual that suits our own needs. And later on in April, after public review, we'll be bringing you a proposed stormwater manual. So Clark is going to remind you a little more detail on those two pieces and why we're here tonight and the advantages for the community. Thanks, Clark, for being here.
Welcome back, Clark.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As John mentioned, this is, this is the ordinance to adopt, amend, and enforce the City of West Lynn's Stormwater Management Manual, which will be a first because we haven't had a stormwater management manual in a while. As we discussed in the work session, the city has been utilizing the City of Portland's Stormwater Management Manual, and to get more in line with what our DEQ requirements are, it was developed through our, our partnership with Brown and Caldwell, a consultant on this, that it would make more sense for us to have our own manual, which we have been in the process of developing for the last eight months. I am happy to say that manual is now in draft form and has been put out for public comment starting today. So hopefully, anyone from the development community or engineering community has any comments on that will reach out to us in the next 30 days, which is how long we're going to leave it open. But today, we wanted to bring forth Ordinance 758 to ask for your approval for adoption so that in the future, we can amend and enforce this manual once it goes into place moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, or shall we, I would entertain a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Just procedurally, I would have you open up a hearing for public comment, just to, to go through the procedure. I don't believe we've received any slips tonight, but do that and then go ahead and close the hearing and then begin your deliberations.
Thank you, City Attorney, for that reminder. So we, we will open up a public hearing on Ordinance 1758. And I'm guessing because Kathy didn't flag me down earlier, I was just proceeding, there was no public comments on that that we received. Anybody in the audience like to give a comment on this? I see, I see none. And we were, didn't receive any written comments on this item either. So with that, I will close, I will close the public hearing, and people will have the opportunity to comment on the Stormwater Management Manual, well, excuse me, Surface Water Management Manual shortly. It's already on the website, and we'll be sending that out for public review. Does that cover the, cover the basis, Counselor President?
I believe so.
This is just giving the authority to adopt that manual and enforce it next month. So...
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve first reading for Ordinance 1758, Amending West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 4, Relating to Surface Water Management, and set the matter for second reading.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the first reading for Ordinance 1758, Amending West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 4, Relating to Surface Water Management, and set the matter for second reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none? Go ahead and call the question.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counselor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Mayor Bealstaski?
Yes. So it has passed unanimously, which means we can proceed to the second reading tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve second reading for Ordinance 1758, Amending West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 4, Relating to Surface Water Management, and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded to... Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the second reading for Ordinance 1758, Amending the West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 4, Relating to Surface Water Management, and adopt the ordinance. Any discussion on this, other than to thank our City Attorney and Engineering Department, Public Works, Clark Idt, for getting this to this point, and we look forward to the adoption of the manual next month, and public comments that we receive, if anybody dares to take a look and try to get through the several hundred pages of the manual. No other comments, so call the roll, please.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Mayor Bielostoski?
Yes, so the ordinance is approved, and it will go into effect in 30 days. Thank you. Everybody, moving on. Next item of business is the Affirmation of West Lynn Local Contracting Rule Exemption 10.015 for Public Improvement Contracts, Invoiced Design or Construction Management. What a mouthful that title was.
It is a mouthful. Thank you, Mayor Bielostoski, and we'll welcome Morgan Lovell from our Engineering Department up to the microphone, and I want to thank Morgan for her work on this project. As you know, the city's operations facility is one of Council's priorities. It's been a project that has already been in the works for many years and is starting to enter a new phase. Morgan has been faithfully performing the duties of moving this project along for several years, and she's been doing a great job, and I think the item that you have in front of you tonight is an example of the kind of detail that we need to get into to be doing this project correctly. It's a little bit technical, but Morgan and Kaylee and many others have been working to make sure that we are following procurement code closely and doing things in a transparent manner, which I think is ultimately best for the community. So, there's a question for you about the use of a particular type of contracting mechanism, but rather than give Morgan's entire staff report or Kaylee's, I will let Morgan introduce this and frame the question for you.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, welcome.
Yeah, we're here tonight just to discuss utilizing an alternative construction procurement method known as construction management general contracting. This is a recommended method for this type of facility construction due to various measures that are outlined in the Agenda Report and the Finding of Facts document that is incorporated. The goal here tonight is to recommend and adopt the finding of facts that justifies the use of this contract method. So, some of the advantages of using a CMGC rather than a traditional design bid build that we might use for a transportation project is the complexity of the project. This project is not only large, but is complex. It is on a specific site that requires specialized knowledge for site development. It requires civil engineering. It requires a lot of mobilization and use of a variety of subcontractors to do this. Bringing in a CMGC allows them to come onboard before the final design is done. What that does, it allows the contractor to work with the final designers, and it allows us to control costs. It allows us to make sure the thing we design can be built for the cost that we think it's going to be. So, rather than designing an entire project, putting out to bid, and then finding out maybe it's more expensive than we anticipated, the contractor is helping us control that cost. They help share the risk of ensuring that that project is built on time and within the price. We have the ability to negotiate a guaranteed maximum price. That helps with, the contractor comes in and amends the contract, and it sets a threshold for a price. We have some certainty in what it's going to cost. We also, it allows for things for early lead items. So, for example, if an HVAC system might take nine months to secure, we don't have to wait until the whole project is designed and built and then wait nine months. We can know that's needed, we can source it and get it there. It cuts down lead time, and as all you are aware, you know, time is money when it comes to construction. We also want to get this built and done within an appropriate amount of time, so the residents and our staff aren't waiting unnecessarily long time to get this built. That is just a variety or an example of some of the savings that we believe this brings to the city for procuring and moving forward with a construction method in this manner. Any questions? Happy to answer them, along with Kaylee's assistance. We're also, to my knowledge, did not receive any public comments on this. A notice of this hearing and formality to allow public comment was posted in the DJC and the West Lynn tidings.
Thank you for the information. One question that comes to mind is, for my understanding and public benefit, like, what's the difference, how does, what's the relationship like between the CMGC and the owner's rep and the city? If that's possible, even explain in a short period of time.
An owner's rep is the professional consultants that really are specialized in these kinds of construction projects. The city doesn't build facilities of this nature very often. We have very talented staff that focus very largely on civil engineering, not site development and the construction of a 50,000-square-foot operations facility. Bringing in an owner's rep helps be our right hand, and it helps us make sure that all of the boxes are checked. They help us negotiate contracts, they are on the job site with us, acting entirely on the city's behalf to make sure the contract is enforced and that the construction is going forward in the manner that is outlined once we go to construction. They also help through the design process, along with our architects, to help set schedules and timelines and make recommendations on how to move forward.
Okay. Cool, thank you for that information there. Counsel President had a question as well.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for this report. It's very helpful for us, because of course, this is not my area of expertise, but I did learn some about this, design bid build versus CMGC at the Toronto Water Conference that we went to a session on this, and so I appreciate you bringing this, because I do think it makes better sense, and obviously, we want the best outcome for something that, as you point out, the city doesn't do on a regular basis, so, thank you.
I recall those sessions from the ACE Conference very well, and I'm a fan of the CMGC project delivery method, and we're actually considering that at South Fork for some of the capital projects we're starting to look at as well, so it's good. I think it's a good idea, and I'm excited about this, really moving forward, Operation Center. If anybody doesn't think it's needed, go walk, ask for a tour of our current facility on Norfolk Avenue in West Lynn, Norfolk Street. It is not, it's an old relic, and it's time for us to modernize, for the Public Works and Parks and everybody to have a nice place to be, so this is just another step in the road to do that. Very exciting.
And we do intend to provide updates along the way for the design process, and I think John might be doing an Ask the City Manager in the coming months to give maybe a tour or some little bit insight to our existing operations facility to show the deficiencies to the public, so that's something we're also discussing.
That's great. Would somebody like to make a motion then on the, do I need to do a public hearing for this component? Just open it up?
Yeah, so there's more procedure to this one too, and I figured I might just read the legal standard. I'm sure you've all reviewed it by reviewing this memo, but just so it's, you know, at the front of your mind. West Lynn's Local Contracting Review Board rules and Oregon law allow the West Lynn City Council, acting as the local contracting review board, to consider and approve specific written findings that support the exemption of certain contracts or projects from traditional competitive bidding requirements, and that's what we're doing here. Morgan has worked with Clash and with our outside counsel, construction contract attorney, to make sure we've looked through all the elements in the statute and discussed why this is the right fit for this type of project. So, ORS 279C.335 lays out those requirements. Specifically, a local contracting review board may exempt a public improvement contract from competitive bidding requirements after it approves findings that, A, the exemption is unlikely to encourage favoritism in awarding public improvement contracts or substantially diminish competition for public improvement contracts, and B, awarding a public improvement contract under the exemption will likely result in substantial cost savings and other substantial benefits to the contracting agency or the state agency seeking the exemption. The local contract review board shall consider the type, cost, and amount of the contract, and to the extent applicable, several factors that we've laid out in those written findings. So, the process now would be to open a hearing for public comment. Morgan mentioned that we did not receive any requests for that hearing after she posted the notice, but even so, we said we would hold one, so we'll hold one, and then you can close it, and then begin your deliberations.
Okay, thank you. For the legal overview, I will then open a public hearing on the local contracting rule exception findings that we have posted, and any comments submitted?
None.
Or no request to speak? Anybody in the audience want to speak on this topic? Okay, and then, as was noted, I'll state for the record in the hearing that we did provide notice of this in the West Lynn tidings and the DJC, that, can't remember what that stands for, but it's the Contractors Journal.
Daily Journal of Commerce.
Okay, thank you. So, opportunity's been provided to comment, so I will close the public hearing then. Thank you, and we will move into deliberations or motions. Any deliberations? Counsel Bright?
I'd just like to make a comment that I have in my career dealt with this kind of contracting, and particularly for complex projects like this, it works really well, and it allows for staff to stay on top of it, because they have kind of that point of contact to make sure that everything's going along the way it should, so I appreciate bringing this to us.
Thank you, agreed with those comments. Thanks for your, providing your expertise. Go ahead, make your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to affirm use of the existing exemption found in Section 10.105 of the City Local Contracting Rules adopted via Resolution 2023-09, and approve and adopt the findings in Attachment 1, and allow for staff to proceed with a CMGC procurement method.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded to affirm the use of the existing exemption found in Section 10.105 of the City Local Contracting Rules adopted via Resolution 2023-09, and approve and adopt the findings in Attachment 1, and allow the city staff to proceed with a CMGC procurement method. Any discussion? Other than the usual thanks to Morgan and Kaylee for bringing this for us, forward, and also, I think, to Mac at, Barry Elsner for the outside council's support, and we're grateful to have a good product before us to adopt and move the ball forward on the Operation Center. Anything else? All right, we'll call the roll, please, again tonight.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Mayor Bielostoski?
Yes. So, the motion passes, and the findings are adopted and affirmed. All right. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I was wondering if we could have Morgan just say a sentence or two about next steps on this project and timeline as we know it.
Please, that would be awesome.
Sure, yeah. So, we are going to be releasing a Competitive RFP, a Request for Proposals, to procure the CMGC services, so that will be our next step. We'll release that this next week, or actually Wednesday of this week. That period will be open for about a month, and then we hope to have lots of proposals. Those will come in, they'll be scored, we'll hold interviews with our top candidates, and then we will be bringing a contract, hopefully, to council in early June, so we can have that contract awarded, and then finalize the design contract, or design, not the design contract, but finalize design, and then move towards construction, hopefully, in late summer, early fall of this year. Also, we do have, because, you know, it is a development, so it'll be going through the traditional planning commission and all those other requirements that would be required of all development, so that initial pre-application hearing with planning, I believe, is scheduled for beginning of April, and our architect consultants will be the applicant going through that on behalf of the city.
That's amazing, thank you, exciting, and hopefully, we can, I'm sure we'll make sure we're involved, the neighbors and impacted, you know, the homes that live somewhere around there, the Barrington Heights neighborhood. I know Robert Jester's been involved.
Yes, so our community outreach person, Luke Borland, has been in contact with that neighborhood association and for Barrington Heights, so they, we've been providing updates to Robert and that group, and part of the scope of the owner's rep and the CMGC will be engagement and community outreach along the process.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and we'll be continuing to talk about that topic over the coming months, as we talk about the funding and financial picture. With that, we'll move on to the Investment Policy Update.
Thank you, Mayor. Your last item on the business agenda tonight is an important one for us. Thank you, folks, for wading through the other business. I'll introduce Lauren Breithaupt to talk about update to our investment policies, which I think were previously reviewed in 2008, if that's the right year, so probably something has changed in that time period and worth looking at. So, Lauren, can you give us the background on this and what you're proposing?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. I have tonight here with me Deanne Woodring and Whitney Mayer. They are the president and senior advisor and client service manager and advisors for Government Portfolio Advisors. We hired them back in September to help us revise our investment policy and begin some investments. As the City Manager mentioned, we hadn't had our investment policy revised in a number of years since about 2008, and so it was about time to start looking at it. In addition, there is a cap on the local government investment pool, and we have finally, for the first time ever, as a city, come close to meeting that cap or hitting that cap. Therefore, we eventually will not be able to put any more money into the LGIP, which will mean that our funding would need to be invested somewhere else. The reason why we're coming close to the cap now is we have more in our reserves, because our expenditures are higher, we have a 15% reserve requirement in our financial policies, so as expenditures go up over years, our reserves are going up with them. In addition, we have issued debt for the water line of $12 million that is still sitting in that account. ODOT has not begun to bill us yet for that project, and so we've been having that money sit in our local government investment pool also, in addition to some other debt, still finalizing our 2018 GEO bond, which is still in there, and again, other reserves, and building up for some of these projects that we're doing over the next few years. So, those reserve balances will be going down over the next few years, but right now, we're at a point where it makes sense for us to start investing outside the pool. And so, we retained GPA to help us. This is what they do for other local governments in Oregon, and they based our new policy off of the Oregon Short Term Fund Board Policy, and they, and we took our policy to the board in January, and they gave it a favorable review, and so they said that our policy looks good to go, and recommends that we take it to our council to approve it. This is a policy that we will bring back year after year with minor changes. We'll have Deanne and Whitney help us with those changes as the time goes on, but I would like to turn it over to them and to you, if you have any questions for them about the new policy, or any questions in general about their services. So, thank you for being here. We'll see you.
Thank you, Lauren. It's great to be in front of you tonight. We are proud to have you guys join our family of cities here in Oregon. GPA was founded, just a quick background in the hands you're in, GPA was founded in 2014. We, I've been in the investment business for 40 years now, serve on the Oregon Short Term Fund Board. You've joined City of Ben, City of Hillsborough, City of Twolton, City of Gresham, City of Oregon City, Albany and Carvalis as our client base. So, we're very versed in the challenges you guys face. In 2022, when we evaluated your balances, you were $27 million. You're growing, you've got, it's really exciting to see all that's happening. I was raised in Milwaukee, I'm very familiar with this neighborhood, and I'm really excited to grow with you guys. So, with that, just if there's any questions on the policy, it was very well-vetted, and we are aligned, and we'll be investing aligned to that, and have done a thorough analysis on the right balance for you. and have done a thorough analysis on the right balance for you.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Any questions or comments on the policy? Council Bright?
I do want to say that, you know, people think investing and they think risky, but they're, you know, preserving principle. There's the rules that you go by. And I can see that the new investment policy is based on that. So I don't think there's concerns. Also, want to mention that, one, besides the additional reserves, I believe in the last biennial budget, we had money put aside for the operations building that hasn't been built yet. So that's one of the reasons that we have these large balances and have to find someplace to invest them. So thank you very much.
And also, to that note, that we will be, assuming that everything goes through smoothly, we will be, we're planning on issuing debt for that operations building, which will be quite a bit of money. And so, again, we'll need somewhere to invest that in the time being. So another reason why we want to do this now instead of waiting until later, so.
Yeah, and I might add to that, that just working ahead like you guys are doing is really fabulous because you're going to have the things in place, the policy in place, the steps in place to help manage through those different projects that you're doing.
So are you, are we, when we adopt this, are we taking, are we going to take money out of the local government investment pool and put it somewhere else? Or is this mainly for new money that comes in? That was one question came to my mind. I know all investments we do are safe from the standpoint of risk, so.
The first step, and we hope, once this policy is adopted, we will be looking at investing about $10 million in U.S. Treasury and Agency Securities. As you guys have seen, interest rates have been all over. So there's a really nice opportunity in investing about 4% and capturing and basically anchoring your portfolio down. Right now, having 100% of it all in the short LGIP, as the Fed moves rates down, you're exposed. So this will be a nice balance to build you in, and that'll be kind of our first step.
Understood. Thank you. Council President, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, thank you so much, Lauren, for bringing this to us. And I'm, I can see that we're in capable hands under your advisement. So I'm happy with the memo as it is and don't have any questions. Thank you.
Well, seeing no other questions, would you like to make a motion to approve the investment policy?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the City of Westland's updated investment policy.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the City of Westland's updated investment policy. Any discussion other than the thanks for our presenters here today and our staff? Seeing none, then call the roll, please.
Council Bonnington?
Yes.
Council Bright?
Yes.
Council President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Mayor Biedystoski?
Yes. Thank you. So the motion passes. The investment policy is adopted and approved.
Thank you very much, and thank you again to Whitney for being here.
We'll be back in the next phase on reporting.
They'll come back to us with some reports as time goes on and.
Get those good returns coming in.
Yes, it's good. We could use all the money we can get, right? So hopefully, good returns.
Absolutely. Thank you. We're in good hands. Very, I like that. Well, we have one more item on the business meeting.
We do.
Which is the Arts and Culture Commission's recommendations for the commissioning of an artist for Art for the Willamette Main Street Bicycle Kiosk.
Indeed. Mayor and council, thank you for entertaining this topic again. Doug, you're coming up, yes? So Doug, excellent. So Doug Erickson, our Library and Community Services Director, and members of our Arts and Culture Commission, who you know well and we all know well, are here to talk about the increased cost estimate and next steps and timing on this project would be super helpful, too. So Doug, are you kicking this off?
Thank you, council, for taking the time to hear us. We've had a few adjustments that we needed to made for this first of our public art installment. There's been some increases in costs based on tariffs and other things. So we have Charity Hudnut and Chutreen Craig from the Arts and Culture Commission here, who serve as our leadership as part of that group. And so I'll turn the time over to them to chat about the increases and what we're asking for.
Thank you, Doug, and thank you for having us to speak tonight. Chutreen is going to go over why there's been an increase. Obviously, we got it approved. It took some time to get it approved, and increase of costs have happened. And also, the design project with the company that we are using to design the bike kiosk and just how it's going to be installed and some of the pickups that we didn't even know about that are happening, including some insurance that is, we have, that he has to carry that he didn't know about either, has increased the cost. So with that, I'm going to let Chutreen go down the breakdown as to why it's gone up. And actually, it's just, really is materials because of the increase that has happened with our economy. So with that, I'll let Chutreen go down that list.
Hi, thank you all. So nice to see you. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm hoping everybody got the updated budgets. Yep. Yes, wonderful, good. I was like, I just wanted to make sure. As you will see, so Travis sent this straight to us because we were really intrigued. We didn't know what was changing, but we got some notes that the size of the actual bike kiosk was going to be different. There needed to be insurance. We had to then, he had to go to the place to build it. It was all these things. But through wonderful, we had some wonderful folks come together, deliberate, and kind of square it down to get it to where it was more maintainable. We actually cut some monies out, so that's always wonderful. But then to do a review, so it's still talking about, you'll see the materials and fabrication. That's including all his new steel, the repurposed bikes, miscellaneous materials, powder coating. That's around $5,040.06. And then his studio overhead and costs. You've got the studio cost, which was a bit more than he was planning. And then the insurance, which he was unsure we were going to have to have. So that's added in there for the $32.84. And then I want to highlight that his artists and labor fees, they're $2,100. So I will tell you all, when we talk to him, he is so excited to be a part of this project. He has done work all over the area. And so he said his biggest dream was to just come and invest and bring something to us. So I was so, I looked at them, I'm like, oh, my goodness. The materials is almost twice as much as he's taking for himself. So I just wanted to highlight that. So that hasn't gone up astronomically. If anything, that just showed me that he really is hoping to do work with us. And then we moved to the delivery and installation. So that's new. We did put a contingency in there just to cover anything else. But that's where it leaves us, it's not quite double, but it's a lot more. So I apologize for the surprise. It was not anything we intended. But we would love your consideration to move this forward and bring this to historical limit.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this back to us. Doug or John, do you know kind of what the general, how, what's the health of the percent for the arts fund reserve that we have?
Yeah, it's quite large. It's over 100,000, 130,000 or so. We haven't spent any money on it since we've been, percentage for the arts have been accruing for the projects, predominantly the GOBON projects and also now Public Works, because that was written into the code as well. So this, like I said, will be our first foray into that, into that realm. And the Arts and Culture Commission have been working very hard, as well as our legal team, to try to get this first contract done and getting going forward. And we're hoping that some of these, these issues that we've been having as we're kind of beginning in this phase, that we will learn and be able to continue on in a different pace or hopefully a better, faster pace as we go forward. One of the things I would like to comment, and this is the first, not only our first public art piece that has been commissioned by the council with the recommendation by the Arts and Culture Commission, but it's also woven into the actual fabric of the, of the, of the actual building itself or the kiosk, if you will. Usually, sometimes our stands alone in many public arts that you see across our area are standalone pieces. So this is another interesting piece because it's integrated into the actual establishment and in the physical structure of the bike kiosk. So that has its challenges as well.
Thank you. And I'm sure with this particular art, the materials are expensive. And then something like, if we ever were to commission a mural or others of public art, there might not be as many material expenses. So I'm sure it'll be varied over time. So open the floor to council for discussion of the topic.
Just wondering if moving forward, maybe a template could be made that has all of those kind of components, like, you know, the line for the insurance, the line for the installation, delivery. And that way, the artist, when they're providing a bid, they know all the components that they're responsible for.
Absolutely. That was a note we made at our last meeting. We were like, we do not want to be caught off guard again. So we plan to be very planned forward and preventative, if we will.
Well, given the support for the project from the Arts and Culture Commission, the health of the fund that we have to fund public art, the community support for this project from the Willamette Main Street Group and neighborhood, I think it's, I'm happy to support it.
I guess mention one other thing, Mayor, excuse me, that is that, you know, the 1%, 1.5% for the arts, percentage for the arts, which is in the code, 1% for acquisition and creation, 0.5% for maintenance. If you looked at this from the Main Street project or all the work that you've done on Willamette Falls, this is falling much under that 1% for the overall cost. So this is a really nice thing that we're doing. And even though the costs have increased, it's, it's not fully representative of what could be spent in that area or what might be spent in the future for that.
Thank you. Any other comments or, Council President, please?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Doug, and members of the ACC. I'm really so excited about this project. I have people ask me all the time, where's Westland's art? And so I'm really excited that we're going to get some, some excellent art. And I admire the local sculptor and his work, and I've seen it in other locations. So it's going to be great. Thank you for all of, all of you've done on this.
Well, I would entertain a motion to approve this, which is on the motion sheet.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the city to enter into a contract with artist Travis Pond at the increased quoted amount for the purposes of a contract for the commission of art for the historic Willamette Main Street Bicycle Kiosk, with the understanding there may be materials cost changes even with regard to this updated quote.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city to enter into a contract with artist Travis Pond at the increased quoted amount for the purpose of a contract for the commission of art for the historic Willamette Main Street Bicycle Kiosk, with the understanding there may be materials cost changes even with regard to this updated quote. I would just add, there's now a contingency factor into the updated quote. So there should be some, there should be some guarantee that that is, won't go too much higher than that because we now have contingency. And the quote, the total amount, just for the record, is $13,605.47. So $13,605.47. So any discussion or, seeing, Council Bonnington, please?
I guess I would suggest that, given the fact that the increased amount appears to be based on steel and the fact that those tariffs could be increased further, that may not be true. We may indeed end up in a situation where steel gets that much more expensive. So we should be aware of that part, at least.
The trade war is hitting close to home. That's what we learned.
Do you have any comment?
Go ahead, please.
Just going to say that we do have a timeline that we're hoping once this gets approved, about three months. So he has things priced out as, as this time right now, at this moment. So we're hoping that it will not, we will not see any other increases. So we're hoping for that, too. Thank you.
What's the time, before we vote, what's the timeline for, when this could be installed? Just for the record.
Yeah, I think from the start, the beginning, it's going to be about three months, from what we understand, from what their construction for the kiosk and them working together. Once it's been approved, they give us a three-month timeframe.
Sweet.
Yep.
All right, well, call the roll, please.
Council President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Council Bonnington?
Yes.
Council Bright?
Yes.
Mayor Biedystoski?
Yes. Motion passes. And for those who don't know, the city recorder has to go through and change the order that she calls us in every time. So she's been doing a lot of work tonight. Thank you for doing that. Different order every time under our rules. We appreciate you. So the final roll call is done. The motion passes. Congratulations and thank you, Arts and Culture. Thank you, Travis. Thank you, Doug. We look forward to seeing the final product. With that, we're on to the final item on the agenda, city manager report. Got about 34 minutes.
It won't be that long. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As always, a nice buffet of options tonight. You've just gotten an insight into the way Kaylee and I and Lauren spend our days, 30 minutes on this, 30 minutes on this, 30 minutes on this. But it's exciting. And I think this, this public art is really cool. Really excited to see some public art coming out of, particularly out of that Main Street project. And it's good to see it located right there. So I really appreciate the work of the ACC on this one. I know it's been a little bit of a long road, but you've got all the policies in place, the procedures in place. I really think it's going to be working well from here on out. So we're excited. And we're going to try to choose art made of the most expensively tariffed items based on the, based on the monthly news. So we will see what we can do with that moving forward. Mayor and council, you mentioned many of the things that I was going to make sure to say earlier under the meeting, but I do have a couple more things just to mention. Looking ahead to your next meetings, the three meetings in April are another lovely buffet of different items. We have your 1 o'clock work session on April 7th is your next public meeting. And we'll be talking about an update on all the council priorities. There's a presentation scheduled about child abuse prevention. Doug Riggs, our lobbyist, we are hoping can join us for an update on the legislative session. And I will say, there is just so much happening down there. You got a taste of the Washington DC version. They're just as busy in some ways down in Salem. I've been spending a lot of time reviewing bills, trying to figure out what their impact might be, farming them out to staff here to understand their impact. We are trying to stay on top of things. You've heard about some of those. Transportation, housing are the big pieces, a lot of other elements. But there's a lot, a lot of smaller bills that they're into every possible aspect of government business down there. So it keeps, keeps it fun. Also, at the April meeting, the first work session, we are hoping to have county staff here to talk about the timing of the Stafford Road Safety Project. So this is the project from Wonker's Corner up to Rosemont Road. And you're thinking, okay, that's a long way from Westland. But we do expect impacts on our own roads from that project. And so we're interested in the timeline and traffic management plan, all kinds of things like that. I think we can all agree that project has been sorely needed for a long time. And it's going to be great ultimately and much safer out there. But we want to know. So the county staff will be here talking about that. And we are also planning to have a work session discussion about a updated right-of-way code. This is how we provide utilities with use of our right-of-way and what the rules are that they must abide by. And that has been a project that has been in the works for some time. We're excited to bring it to you. You have your business meeting on April 14th. We do still have on the docket that, maybe you remember, continued appeal from January that got continued all the way to April, which seemed a long way away, and now here it is. We, that one may be on the docket for, for that meeting. We also have a couple of Public Works topics and a discussion of the planning docket, which was already mentioned that the Planning Commission is working on. Finally, on April 21st, another work session. The, I think the main item of interest there is the joint meeting with the Transportation Advisory Board. This is the pedestrian traffic safety project list. Our staff down in engineering and the TAB have been working really hard on looking at an updated project prioritization. And we're going to be bringing both the project recommendations and cost estimates, as well as a discussion of how other communities fund those types of work. And this is a, this is an item you've heard a lot about from members of the public, and we're excited to bring back some information for you for possible decision-making. I think it's something the community is really calling out for. So that'll be good. Also, housing production strategy and tree code on that meeting. So it's, it's a lot. I appreciate your attention to all of those things. And Mayor, you already mentioned the state of the city. That's great. Just two upcoming deadlines, the Robert Moore Award. Deadline is April 3rd for that. That's for outstanding volunteerism here in the community. So still a few days left to get in applications for that. And then community grant applications are due April 30th. So we encourage all our community partners to take a look at that application form. That ties well into the budget. Lauren stuck around because we have been, and when I say we, I mean mostly Lauren, but working extremely hard on the budget. And we are just. we, I mean mostly Lauren, but working extremely hard on the budget. And we are just there with a draft budget heading off, heading off to the printer, heading off to designers, I mean. And so all of the intensive staff work from all the different departments and Lauren and her staff have been put together into a draft document that we are excited to present you. Thinking a little bit about the budget, I don't want to spoil the fun of the actual budget meeting. We are required to bring you a balanced budget. You know that. But many of the same conditions that we've talked about for years continue to exist. Costs are rising. Steel costs, all kinds of costs for everything that we use, including labor, continue to rise. Revenues are relatively flat. And every year, when we put together a draft budget, we talk about a few common elements in our budgeting here. The fact that we have, the, the big hidden secret in West Lynn is that we have a very low municipal tax rate compared to our peer cities. And it's, it's great in some ways. If you like paying low taxes to your city, it prevents us from providing the level of service that a lot of our community wants and that our neighboring cities are able to provide. Our staff do a super fantastic job. But when you look at the per capita, almost in every department across the city, we are lower than our peer cities. And once again, we will certainly, as I mentioned, deliver a, a balanced budget, but it's going to be a flat budget that really is a status quo kind of thing. We do have, we'll have the full menu of capital projects that we can afford, but in terms of our basic general fund departments, police, planning, parks, library, all of those services are really going to be as is, is what we're going to present you. We are happy not to be in the scenario this year where a lot of local governments are and school districts are where there's going to be cuts. We are not looking at that this year, although we will have a discussion with your, with you about what the out years look like. I guess where I was heading a moment or two ago, every two years, when we put together a budget and presented to you, we are circling those four-year numbers. And it's never great. Our scenario four years out is always problematic. And what we have to do, which we would do anyway, is really carefully guard our expenditures. We almost never expand everything that we budget. We have to really try to maximize our revenues all the time in order to continue bringing balanced budgets to this community. So it's an area of concern. The, the, this sort of two years to two years to two years and hoping it works out is not ideal. And I think I can speak for all of our department head team when I say that we get inquiries all the time about what maybe the community would like to see that we're not able to provide. So we intend to have a, show you what we know, show you our math. And we're proud of the work that we've done. And we're proud that we're able to provide as much service as we do. But I do think it not always is it what the community would, would like to see. So the first budget meetings are in late May. And right now, we're just in printing and publication, and we'll be talking more to you about it. But we are excited to have those conversations. So that's that piece. From that, all the way to other fun things that I get to do. Today, I get to pick out the winner of the Lucky Leprechaun out of the, out of the rotor down there. And I just bring that up mostly because it's fun, but because there were dozens and dozens of pieces of paper in there from kids and families that our Parks Department was able to activate and get out into the parks looking for Lucky. And it's, it's super cool. So it's really fun to see the enthusiasm all day. Today, there were families coming in and kids dropping off the little, little pieces of paper. So I just think it's really cool. And it's, it's really fun to see what everyone around here does. Couple of other, maybe just really only one quick thing. Doug's not usually here when I get to do this, but I always have at least one library event. And this one is one of my favorite ones. It's the Jigsaw Puzzle Swap coming up. Bring in your jigsaw puzzles till the 21st, and you get a, you get a little coupon or whatever, and you get to come in the next day, I think, and select a new jigsaw puzzle. So just another cool thing. And what happens is it ends up being a social event, and it's super cool. So it's always got a hidden agenda of connecting our community, which I love. So dig out those old jigsaw puzzles and bring them in. Otherwise, we are working hard to follow up on previous council direction, working on the Oppenlander decision that you made. We're working on the Lady Bee, which you heard about earlier tonight. We'll be working on the ordinance options for the item that came up from public comment right at the beginning of this meeting. So there's plenty, plenty of things going on that we are carrying out your direction. Otherwise, next week is spring break. No meetings, no council meetings. Wish you all a happy spring break.
Thank you. And I want to open the floor for comments. Council Bonnington had a comment, and go down the floor.
So with regard to the level of service that we'd like to be able to provide, that we're not able to, it would be really insightful if we could get some information about what the costs of that look like, what those items are, and have a good understanding of what that, that would entail, as well as whatever it would take to stabilize the budget longer term. I think I'd be really interested in that information.
Great point. I agree. I was thinking about the same thing when I was sitting up here. And just kind of feels like, ever since I've been here, I got involved with the city, let's see, back in high school when I was working on high school parking. And I remember then, the budget meetings where it was Eileen Stein at the time projecting out that there was going to be a big budget deficit in the near future. And it's always been this kind of mode at the city where really worried about that. And then luckily, it hasn't ever really materialized to a huge extent. But it kind of seems like we're always in that phase of, of thinking like that because we have to, based on the property taxes. And we're smart with our money, so we don't have to make cuts. But how do we have a, kind of get that, get that fixed, or at least have a conversation about it? And then I was also thinking about, like, we're looking at transportation projects and how, how much those could cost and ways to fund those. And like, what are the other things in the city that people have been clamoring about or staff have been needing? It's a good conversation to have. And I don't want to overwhelm everybody with coming up with a huge list of things, but definitely something that could be interesting to review as we go into the budget cycle and talk about. So, I don't know. Good. Thank you for bringing it up, Council Bonnington. Any thoughts? Or shall I go to Mary first? And then, Council President, please?
Oh, I was just going to kind of share a funny anecdote. I don't know if Director Breithop remembers, but we went together to the high school to a government class. It may have been Todd Jones's class. And she was, she gave an excellent description of the city's budgeting needs. And, and students were somewhat engaged, but having worked at the high school for about five years, I was able to translate for her and just tell them that we are low-key broke. And they got it. So, but I do appreciate all the work that you all do. And I'm interested to know also this, you know, some rough estimate of, of projects that people continually ask for, but we can't, haven't ever been able to afford to even get near. That would be very interesting to me. So thanks for all of that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bright, please.
I think putting together that list might be really, really difficult because I think everybody in the community might have different things that they, or services that they would like to see us provide. I'm, I'm sure that there are some buckets of more things that you hear from more frequently, but I don't think we can really satisfy everybody. You know, I remember when I worked in water saying, well, how about if we just give you water 23 hours a day, you know, as a way to, to cut costs? You know, that's, that's not something anybody wants to hear or that can really be done. So.
Agreed. Agreed. You know, and I'm thinking about it like, more like, are there consistent themes that you've heard that come up? Are there staffing needs that could be addressed? And how do we even address them? Because every time we get in this situation where it's a possibly, you know, a status quo budget, we usually find some ways to get projects done. But it's an interesting conversation to at least have with, with everybody, especially if we're talking about one facet of it, which is transportation and pedestrian safety. So I think this is what everybody expects of us to, to look out for the city. And it'd be nice to not have to say every time that we're worried about the cutting in a few years. And eventually, it might even happen if we don't address it. So any thoughts, City Manager, on the discussion tonight of everybody?
Lots of thoughts. I, I agree with everything you all just said, in particular, Council Bright. You can't make everyone happy, but there are recurring themes. And, you know, we have professional staff running each of our departments. They know what they hear about from members of the public, and they know what they think, and they know what their own staff thinks. So it would be, it would be relatively easy for us to bring you a starter conversation. You know, for example, what if we had a second school resource officer? What if we had a second code enforcement officer? You know, what if we had, there's a number of things that we could do that I think would, would solve some of the problems that we hear from the community repeatedly about things that folks in this community want. So my question to you, I, I think you could go a lot of different levels on this. And, but I, at a, at a sort of easy, manageable level would be, you know, a list of, of staffing and of projects that we hear about that could have some rough numbers on them, just to give you a sense of scale. And my question to you is timing. Do you want to talk about these things before you start budget meetings, during the budget meetings, after the budget meetings? Again, sense of scale. Budget meetings start in late May, so it's about two months from now. It would be relatively easy for us to put together some starter conversations sooner than that, if you'd like. Or it could come out of the budget discussions once you've, once you've checked our math.
Any thoughts, Council Bonnington?
I, I think the sooner the better on that. Before the budget meetings, would probably be good to have those starter conversations. If we're going to look at ways to supplement those funds, we need to know what they are. So sooner the better, I would say.
Maybe, maybe we can have an introductory conversation and then prepare ourselves to go into the budget with that information so that we can even discuss with the budget committee. That, you know, have the options to discuss with the budget committee, or a list, or, you know, to talk about how, how should the city move forward with funding needs if they, or addressing the budget issues that come up. Any, Council Bright, please?
Having prepared budgets, getting a lot of new information right now could be a real challenge if we decided to take a sharp right turn or something. So having, having the draft budget in design right now with all the numbers, even changing one number could modify the whole thing. So I don't want to put that on the finance department.
Understood. Good point. Council President, please.
I was, I was going to say something to that effect, but Carol said it much better. So.
So how about, it's, City Manager knows that we're interested in this topic from everybody. And would you like to have a conversation internally with staff about what their best timeline would be from the staffing?
We're happy to, we're happy to do that, Mayor. I don't, I'm not taking this as a request to have a bunch of meetings and a conversation and change the proposed budget. Rather, what I see you asking is, you've, you've heard what we're, you know the general outline of what we're bringing you. It's not a surprise to anyone what our budgets look like here in this town. Really, you're asking the question of what is it that's not included in this budget? And, and it's a starter for a conversation that would move parallel and then beyond, I think, is what you're asking for.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. So you don't have to change the draft budget. I saw you, I saw you. Like, don't, don't email the designer. Okay.
I think that, that's.
Great. We'll work on scheduling with you, Mayor.
Okay. Anything else? And I want to thank you, City Manager, for the robust report tonight on everything that's going on. Appreciate that. Council President, please.
Thank you. I just wanted, I forgot to mention earlier that I am having another open conversation Thursday at 4:00 PM at The Vintage in, on Main Street, Willamette. And anybody who wants to join can join me. And, and Council Bright was with me last time, and it was really fun. And several people came.
I guess on that front, I should probably add that the Cars & Coffee events that I've been helping to organize, we will have our third this Saturday from 8:00 to 10:00 AM in Willamette.
Awesome. No, I got to get one of these events scheduled for myself. This is up in the ante here. Thank you, everybody. We will adjourn this meeting, let everybody go home for a early St. Patrick's Day. Don't party too hard, please. We're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, members of the public for sticking around as well.